Good evening. It's five o'clock and I call to order the workshop of the Victoria City Council. Our workshops are informal, so with that, we're going to get, we're going to dive right into our agenda. There's two items on the workshop agenda this evening, and the first is to discuss proposed 2026 fees and charges, and our preliminary 2026 general fund budget and levy projections. So kicking us off on that topic this evening is our Assistant City Manager and Finance Director, Ms. Trish Pollock. Ms. Pollock, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This evening is our third workshop and the final workshop before we certify our max tax levy in September. The first topic is fees and charges for services. Sources of revenue are primarily property taxes, as you can see, eighty-two percent of our revenues. The charges and services include permit revenues, facility rentals, and intergovernmental revenues such as police aid and grants. And the other two percent is interest earnings and other miscellaneous refunds and reimbursements. Criteria for adjusting fees includes market comparison, which are set at the mid to upper quartile of the market cities. Some fees are also set by legislation such as the International Building Code for our building permits. And many of our fees are cost recovery and self-supporting where possible. How do we project revenues for that eighteen percent that's not the levy or the franchise fees? We begin by looking at the three-year average. So in this case, our three-year average includes 2022 through 2024. Then we look at our year-to-date for 2025 to determine whether or not there are any trends that have been changing. Our largest revenue for services is building permits, which can be pretty difficult to predict. However, we look at both the available lots in the city and weigh in projections from the building department and planning staff to come up with an estimated number of building permits to project. So for 2026, we're budgeting one hundred and forty-four new homes, which is the same as 2025. The reason that that amount was increased for dollar-wise is because our average permit amount has been trending higher than previous years budgeted. Additional factors include department head recommendations for changing fees or for added services such as the park facilities line and park donations. The Park and Rec directors plan to add some programming for '26 and also outreach for donations, so that those line items have been increased. Do you have any questions about any specific revenues?
I just have a comment. I would handicap what we think our interest on investments is going to be in 2026. I think the trend is clear that there's going to be a push for lower interest rates for short-term. And there's, the market seems to be reflecting pretty strongly that the Fed will cut rates this year and then continue to do so throughout 2026. And if we're exposed to short-term interest rates, we probably will see a revenue decline in that. So I think I have an abundance of caution. I wouldn't be increasing it, but at best to flat, maybe we take some off just to forecast that that could be an impact to us.
Okay. I'll take another look at that. I know I normally budget the interest pretty conservatively just because of the
Good.
the changing of the market, but I'll take another look at that.
All right. Nobody has a crystal ball, but
Right.
there are, there are bets for a decrease at least of twenty-five basis points in the next couple, in the next month in September, maybe another twenty-five in December, and then conservatively figure on maybe three more of twenty-five basis points by all through 2026. So stepping down, so we could be a hundred and twenty-five basis points lower.
Yeah.
If, if the tug-of-war forces, you know, went out in that direction, so.
Yep. I'll take a look at that. Any other questions about revenues?
Let's go back there for a second. I'm just looking at, at these things where we have our three-year average and our preliminary budget. And there's a couple of places that kind of stand out as maybe some places we could shave a little if we needed to. And one of those is building permit fees. The other one is mechanical water and sewer permits. I know we want to be conservative on those because we feel like it's slowing down. And I'm wondering if, if that's what you're taking into account here. The other one is these plan check fees, which, you know, consistently we, we generate more money than we budget. So I'm trying to accommodate that a little bit.
Yeah, that's, that's definitely always a consideration. And it is difficult to predict what those are. The plan check fees can vary quite a bit depending on the development that they're working on. If they're homes that are like model homes that are like repeated, then they get a discount on the plan check fees because they're, they don't have to review the same plan over and over and over again. So it's really hard to know in the year ahead how many of those there's going to be. And sometimes we estimate a little bit too low and sometimes we've estimated a little bit too high. So, um, yeah, it's, it seems that if we, if we go with the hundred and forty-four homes, which is what our building department feels comfortable with and our planning department feels comfortable with, that these are the numbers where we should be landing because we did increase them per, per billing permit as well. But are you thinking that they should be higher or lower?
I'm, I'm thinking they should be lower, which would lower our overall levy. And, you know, just kind of in the interest of trying to find some places to maybe give our, give ourselves a little bit of a haircut, this might be an option.
So if we lower them, then we'll actually have to increase the levy because we'll have less other revenues. So in order to, in order to get more money and less on the levy, we're going to have to increase them.
Understood. Yeah. I'm, I'm sorry. We were looking at a different part of the pie.
Yep. So if we're looking at expenditures, I would agree with that. But this is a little bit, yeah, where we did actually increase, as you can see, over the twenty-five budget because we did end up with surplus revenue on the billing permits last year. So we did increase it, knowing that as well, if we did come up short, we do have the Revenue Stabilization Fund that we could supplement that shortfall with. So that was kind of the thinking on where, why we landed where we landed.
Very good. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, if I can just make an additional comment on the plan check fees, thanks. And Trish said this, but I think it's important just to pause and say this out loud, too. A couple of years ago, we did actually make an intentional decision to actually reduce that fee. So those fees used to be a lot higher. And we did this because of the efficiencies that we gain operationally. So as Trish talked about initially when we're setting fees, one of the things that we look at is cost recovery. And so we want to make sure, especially as it relates to housing affordability and the new homes. We want to, of course, make sure growth pays for growth, and so we're recovering our fees, but we're not looking to make money on them. And so when we have efficiencies operationally, we do look at how we can pass those savings on. And the plan check fees is one of those areas where, as we were, as we became more efficient, and Trish had shared with you that with the plan check, when you have the same model, we're not charging the same amount because we're looking at, as long as everything on that plan is the same, then that, those savings are passed on. It's a bulk, basically a bulk discount that is passed on to the developer. And we hope that they are passing that on to whoever purchased the home in that savings. We don't know. Of course, that's the private market. We don't know if that's the case. But we feel that we're doing our part to ensure that we're not adding to the housing affordability challenge.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions on this? All right, carry on.
Okay. So then, oh, sorry. So these next few slides are going to detail all the changes to the 2026 fee schedule. This is not including water, sewer, and stormwater. We're going to talk about those enterprise funds in November. So this first slide is community development changes. So the business subsidy application fee is increasing a thousand dollars, as is the escrow. That escrow is going up significantly, and that is to cover the payment that we pay to Northland, our municipal advisor, for conducting analysis for TIF and other business subsidies that people are asking for. That way then, we have the money upfront and we don't have to collect it through an invoice later. And then a new outdoor dining public parking rental. There was a rental fee per ordinance for use of public parking spaces for the season. Zoning compliance, fences, sheds, and retaining walls are all existing permits that are being increased due to staff time and cost recovery. The encroachment agreement was previously listed in the fee schedule but didn't have a charge. So this is just to correct that and make that update. And then the early grading agreement is a new fee this year as well. Any questions on community development fees?
Well, and just, just a comment, some of these fees haven't been increased for quite some time, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Like, can you give us a
I would say probably since I can remember, and I've been here thirteen years.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it's been quite some time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And this slide is the Victoria Recreation Center changes. There's an increase in fees to the gymnasium rental. The advertising kiosk is being restructured to allow for more options. Drop-in pass for youth under eleven, skate rentals, ice arena party rentals, and open skate are all new fees this year, new offerings. And then the multipurpose room is increasing its fees to align with our market cities as well. Any specific questions on Victoria Recreation Center?
Yeah, Ms. Hardy, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I just want to, I, I know we had some discussion last year because we did increase the, our fees for the recreation center last year. And so we, we had heard from you that it really wasn't an appetite to consider increasing fees for recreation center memberships for this year. That being said, you do see a new drop-in pass for residents and non-residents for children under eleven. And the reason that that is, is because they will not have access to the gymnasium. So we're slightly reducing that fee, creating a new fee, so they're not paying for something that they're not having access to. So I just want to clarify that, that piece of it. And the skate rentals are, would be new. We're not currently doing that. So that would be a new revenue stream for, for the city. It's not a service that we're currently offering.
So, okay, I just had a, so we don't offer skate rentals currently?
That is correct.
We're going to bring skate rentals in and then charge five dollars for it?
That would be the plan. So the fee would be proposed, but that, there would be further discussion about that because that would be an increase to the service level and the amenities that are offered. So you still have to make that decision, but we wanted to pull that out here as a potential fee so you could see that there's a revenue stream that goes with that.
Is that something that we would do, or would we bring someone in to manage that function?
So our, from what I understand, our park staff, particularly our front desk staff, would be managing that on our behalf. So we would not require additional staffing beyond what we have just for that service.
Okay, so, but to be clear, we don't have skates today?
That is correct.
And then We got to purchase
We need to acquire skates. We need to staff skates. We need to disinfect skates. Do we have a sense as to whether or not that's really a five-dollar per pair revenue? Or are we going to break even at best? Do we have a sense of this projection? Like, or put another way, does, if we're not going to have revenue from it, are we going to break even? If we're going to lose, is it something that's a service that the citizens of Victoria really would find attractive to enough that we would be subsidizing it through the general fund budget or, you know, through the Park and Rec budget? I mean, I'm, I'm okay with skate rentals as long as it covers our cost of acquiring, maintaining, replacing, disinfecting, you know, there will be, they will wear out, they will need to be replaced, they'll need to be sharpened. Is that a, is that a value proposition for the city that makes sense?
Ms. Hardy, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We will bring that information back to you with that larger discussion. So we'll be happy to answer all those.
Great, thank you.
I don't have that, the answers to all of that today, but yes, we will absolutely do that.
Five dollars, yes, five dollars seems low to me.
Well, I mean, it has
With all that stuff, right?
It might seem low, but it might seem that it's not going to get done at all, in which case we would have bought fourteen thousand dollars worth of skates on it. And I'm throwing numbers out there. And, you know, will we, will we rent enough pairs in open skates to be able to make that a venue that
And we will, we will have a business plan on that option coming forward.
I wonder how often do we have drinks available to even have open skate? This is the second question because we don't generally have free ice time. So it might not even, right, we could say we're going to do it, but if there's no free ice, then that's a problem, so.
That's a good point.
And I, I fully understand that I, I made Jenna's day very bad tomorrow. I get it.
All right. All right. Anything else on this slide? All right, go ahead, Trish, moving forward.
Great questions. Okay. Next slide is Park and Rec. So they are planning to restructure the Lions Park Pavilion rental to be able to book a specific timeframe, reason being that it would allow for more rental options. And then the Charleston Tune Bandstand is increasing its fees. And the picnic table and memorial benches are increasing to cover costs.
Okay, so this is if someone wants to donate. This is what their charges
Exactly.
to donate a picnic table.
Correct, yeah, because the costs have gone up, and especially with the concrete, the price to put the slab in is very expensive.
So just one question here on the timing and stuff we're looking at. That's pretty tight timing. Is this same-day stuff?
Yeah, so their plan is to have one of the Park and Rec staff going clean between the two and three o'clock timeframe.
Oh, wow. Okay. That's pretty aggressive, but, I mean, it, I'm not saying it can't be done. It just, when I see an hour, that's a pretty quick turnaround.
Yeah, it might take a team instead of a person. Okay. Any other questions on this?
My, not really, like, I, I only see like Monday through Thursday. Is there not weekends?
So the, the fees for the Friday through Sunday are not changing, so I just put no change under the twenty-five
Okay.
because I was running out of room on my
Understood.
All right. Ms. Hardy has a comment, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Great questions on all of these. So, so this is something in Trish, and I had lots of questions around this, and so hopefully we can answer some of the questions. My understanding is that the half-day rentals will not be available on the weekend, and so it'll only be during the day. And right now, the way that, that this is scheduled is that if a city or the Lions or somebody were to hold an event in the more, let's say, eight, eight to ten, we have a training up there, the city has a training up there, then the way that the system currently is set up is that, that, once that's booked, even though it's going to be available for the next six hours after ten o'clock, it's not able to be rented out. And so, so during the weekday, we'll have an opportunity to gain some revenue, even if we're using it in different capacities. And the in-between, there's not a, a larger demand until we get into the, we'll call them, call it like the senior graduation parties. Then I think there may be a little bit of a rush to get things cleaned up. But one of the things that the staff were keeping an eye on this year was how much, how much, what type of work and how much work are we doing in between the cleaning to see if this is even reasonable? And so our understanding is people are, have been very respectful with the pavilion and do a nice job cleaning up after themselves. For the most part, it's the emptying of the garbages, maybe a, a quick cleaning of the bathrooms. So they have not, at least those who have been renting it so far, have been respectful to the building and leaving it in good condition. When we do have our cleaning company come in and do the cleaning, we are charged ninety dollars per cleaning. And so we did not think that under this scenario, if we were moving in this direction, it would be an option for us unless we significantly increased that, that cost. And we would likely, because that would be outside of our contract, we'd likely, and during the day, would likely be charged more for that service. And so in order to do this, we had to make a decision to bring that in-house, that cleaning piece. And so this would be to trial it for one year. And then if it works, we'll, you know, we would be gathering what's working, what's not working. So it's possible that this would go back to the way it has been if it's not able to work out the way that we think. But this would be an opportunity for us to make that beautiful building available to more people during the day, especially during that higher demand, higher demand season.
Do we have any data on, I mean, I'm sure we do, the use, like, non-residents compared to resident? I'm just wondering if, if we want to raise the non-resident a little bit higher and make it more, I mean, it's busy in the summer and we maybe want, I mean, obviously, if it's, we don't want it to sit empty either, but I feel like our residents are using it a lot. And so if that helps our residents get more access to it because the non-resident fees are a little bit higher, I
I can, I can get that information from Jenna.
Just a thought, I just
Good to know. Other questions, comments on this? All right.
And then there's just one change in the admin section. A new fee for the one-day consumption and display permit, which is twenty-five dollars.
Can you, the one-day, so that would be like a
Yeah.
Like when the Lions have their fish fry and they have alcohol there? Is that, what that, what, what is that?
I'll let Claudia answer. Give us an example of this, please.
No, no, Councilmember Roberts, the consumption and display permit is when someone like the Lions or a different group wants to bring in hard alcohol or let their members bring in hard alcohol and not charge for it. That's what the consumption and display is for.
So they wouldn't be making money off it? It's basically just letting people bring their own?
And that, this is required by state statute. So, and the fee is what we are allowed to charge by state statute. In the past, we have not charged for that. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just, I was confusing on what that was.
Yeah, good, good point.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Okay.
This slide's looking at our utility franchise fee fund. It's a ten-year projection, 2026 through 2035. The original undergrounding debt service will be paid off in year 2031. So the green there, you'll see that most of the increase in our fund balance will be realized in 2032. We'll continue to increase our fund balance for more undergrounding projects over the next five years as they approach. And then the other debt service payment that you'll see is the one hundred and sixty thousand that's left in those last four years is for the Wasserman Park debt service. Staff are not recommending an increase in utility franchise fees at this time. Any questions about franchise fees?
So everything, like, so the three hundred thousand drops off in 2031, correct?
Correct, so
And so that's the undergrounding debt service. So is that three hundred thousand, is one hundred and forty thousand of it the underground and the other one sixty is the Wasserman?
Correct. I mean, it varies a little bit year over year because the principal will increase as the interest decreases, but yes, approximately.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Any other questions on this? Okay.
So now we'll take a look at the updated 2026 general fund budget and levy. So the June preliminary budget levy projection was nine point two-six percent. After considering guidance given at that workshop from council, we're proposing a max tax levy increase of nine point nine-six percent. Reminding you that that does not mean that your property taxes will increase by that. That is just a year-over-year difference in the tax levy. What are the proposed changes from June? The top two lines are for training opportunities for the Community Development Director to participate in the Compass Peer Training. And then the second line is for the city manager. If she is elected to the Government Finance Officers Association Executive Board, she will need to travel to Washington, DC. So we would remove that if she's not selected before final budget. And then the elections is to reprogram the DS two-hundreds. And the city received the notice of the levy for the Lake Minnetoka Conservation District since that last budget workshop, and they have increased their fee eight thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars. So it went from twenty thousand to just over twenty-nine thousand dollars, like a forty-three percent increase. They stated that the increase was due to, they went back to the amount that the levy was in '21. So they had lowered it for three years to use up some surplus reserve funds. So now they're reinstating that. And then also they are hiring an executive director position, which is going to increase our personnel budget significantly.
Do they not have an executive director currently?
They did have one, and now they're getting another one again. They're reinstating it, is what the letter said.
So not adding, but
Restating, yeah. The next line item is because of the big beautiful bill, they included an exemption of a portion of overtime pay for individuals that are non-exempt. So this would include our public works personnel who currently have the option to elect comp time or overtime. time or overtime. So we can expect that we'll see fewer people electing comp time, um, and instead wanting overtime pay since it will likely be tax exempt for them. Currently, the comp time, they use their bank up before the end of the year, so they get more time off, but we're not paying that out, um, in cash. So, um, we've included 15,000 as an estimate of what it could cost, um, for some additional employees to have overtime. Um, and then the final line item is the balance of the amount that we needed to hit the 9.9% levy goal. Um, the trail maintenance is definitely a need, um, there's a great need for additional seal coating and, um, maintenance on the trails, so, um, that's where that amount went to get us to the 53,700, um, that we needed to hit the 9.9.
Okay, questions, comments?
I don't think I have any comments on these, but one thing that I'd like us to have a discussion about is, this, this is the time for us to set our fees for 2026, and after this, the window closes without any kind of special council action. I, I'd like us to consider the thought of increasing our fees for parkland dedication in lieu of land from these developers. We have seen, I think, over 2025, we repeated, no, we won't dedicate land to these new subdivisions that we're plucking down, and developers are paying the fees, paying the fees, paying the fees. So there's a value equation for them in doing that. We're not getting the land, but we make these justifications that we have these concentric circles around parks that we have, and, you know, there's, you know, we, we make these value judgments on, hey, you know, this many, this distance is close enough for a park. I feel like we are missing an opportunity to start shifting the direction on those decisions, and if, if those are the decisions that are being made, then they need to be more expensive decisions. And the reason for that is that when that happens and the, the case is made that there's another park closer by, closer by, what we're doing is we are systematically increasing the demand on that existing park space. That equipment wears out faster, that's more money that's coming out of our general fund budget at some other point in some ratcheting up the budget to cover for that what was more or less unplanned depreciation on the existing equipment. So, um, I, I'd like us to give consideration to raising those fees so that we can bring in more revenue from that and either get the land we need or then, then let those fees pay for the increased burdens that are being placed on the existing.
Okay, Ms. Hardy, I think there's some, some suggestions on this, right?
There are, Mayor, Mayor members of the council and Councilmember Yvansky, um, we hear you and we'll, we'll bring back, um, this item if there's council consensus to do that, to just talk a little bit more about park dedication and the requirements around that. I think it's a real, it's really good even with all the development that we're having just for the general public to be aware, so, um, and I can certainly appreciate what you're saying because that is with all the parks and trails that we have as a growing community, um, maintaining and investing in what we have is very important to us. So I certainly am hearing you. Um, but the state law does require that the fees are proportional to the, the need that, that is, um, that the need proportional to what was created by the development, so, um, and it restrict, when you're taking park dedication fee in lieu of land, we are strict, restricted to use those only for new park amenities and new parks. So we're not able to use those funds for park dedication.
Understood.
Uh, or park maintenance.
And in the places where we have had new land dedicated, we have empty fields. So if our idea is to program those new spaces, then we need money for those new spaces and, and we should, if, if we're restricted by statute, to put them into new facilities. Those new facilities aren't getting built, then it just goes and reinforces my argument about the existing facilities taking on more burden because there isn't the resources to, uh, keep those afloat. So I think it's like, uh, Madam City Manager has said, it, it bears out a discussion, um, but I think we, we would be remiss in how we're treating the citizens of Victoria if we're not paying attention to this and, and going for that revenue stream while we have the opportunity to have.
I, I agree, I think it does warrant, it's a healthy discussion to have further, and we're a growing community, so, um, to your point about the parks get overburdened, 10 years ago, this probably wasn't as big of an issue, right? We just weren't as big and you weren't seeing the growth and so I, I think it, I mean, I'm sure there's, you're gonna bring up the statutes and things like that, but it's a healthy discussion to have.
Do we have any sense of park usage?
It's a great question.
Mayor members of the council, just to be clear, what do we, like, who's attending our parks, how often they're?
Yeah, I would say, I mean, if, and I think this goes to, um, as we think about how we, how we are programming our parks and how, how they're being used. You know, do we have 20 neighborhood parks that sit empty, you know, the majority of the time? Do we have, um, park equipment that's not being used? I, I, you know, I, that's always been a question to me because park maintenance is very expensive. And, um, so that's always been a question to me about, you know, are they being used? Are they being used in the way they are currently programmed, or is there some other things that we could be doing? And, um, that might be a good, that might be a good project or a good question for our parks and our department, our, uh, committee to kind of figure out how they're being used. And I know you guys have, do, do some pop-up park stuff.
Mm-hmm.
But that would, might be a good opportunity to have a full discussion about parks and.
And I would just say too, you know, yes, if we don't build new parks in certain neighborhoods, neighborhoods that have parks are getting, uh, taxed, you know, they're being used more, right? So yes, but if we buy, build more parks, that means we need more people to help take care of them, right? So there's an extra cost there too. So no matter what we do, there's going to be an extra cost because it's either replacing the older stuff that's getting overused because we have less parks, or if we have more parks, you're going to need more people to help take care of them, public works and such.
Does, do we separate out the public work staff that is, uh, benefits parks? So like there's the, the, so we know what park and rec, uh, the parks cost us?
Yeah, so, um, great question, Mayor. Um, so we have different departments, and when the public work staff is filling out their time card, they are allocating hours to these certain, um, pay codes, which are then, um, going to those specific departments, and park maintenance has its own department. So yes, um, we do have, we have the amount that they, that they cost.
That might be an interesting exercise to look at what that looks like year over year. Yeah, Ms. Hardy, please.
Thank you, Mayor members of the council. The other thing I'll just add is we did take a park survey a couple of years ago, um, I think it's been a couple of years now, and I, we did ask some of the questions that were raised here this evening. So when we bring back the discussion on park dedication, I think it would probably make sense to maybe package this as just a parks conversation, um, and we can bring back some of that survey information because we can look at it through a different lens as we're talking about this budget and our, the future and how we want to set ourselves up for a future success here with our parks. So we'll bring all that back for a future discussion, um, and then we'll have an internal conversation as long as, um, you're okay with this, to either bring that as a separate conversation, or maybe we'll package it and bring it when we talk about the capital, um, budget. So if, unless you've got a preference, write up, but otherwise we'll take that back and, and look at it and bring something back for you, for sure.
And I know it's extra work, but it would also be, I think, introspective for us to know, in comparison to our neighbors, i.e. Janhassen, Chaska, Waconia, what is the park space per capita of our communities? And a couple ways that we can look at that, right? We can look at, you know, um, park acreage per person or number of parks per person so that we can get a sense as to, are we really heavy on parks? Are we light on parks? I mean, lakes and parks isn't our name, we, I think it uses to know that if, how we're doing in terms of, you know, our neighbors in, in that space, to frame the discussion about, you know, do we have a good balance or do we have, are, are we overparked, are we underparked?
Yeah, I think that's a good conversation, for sure.
I think, you know, we had this conversation, it feels like many years ago, uh, but, you know, like even just, you know, is it, we don't need as many neighborhood parks and those can be, but we want more destination-type parks, right? Like, I think the variety is nice, right? We have, you know, and when we were looking at our southern growth area, that was one of the things we considered was, you know, do we want more of that destination park that you see like in Maple Grove and, and places, you know, like where there's a lot of different stuff that we, you know, because we have a lot of neighborhood parks and it feels like, in the past at least, I don't know about the recent, uh, uh, survey, but, you know, the, I, it felt like, you know, people were asking for more of the, you know, different things and, and, you know, more of those destination-type park type.
Yeah.
And I think we're encroaching on the topics that would be part of a parks study, which we, we've, we've made a conscious decision as council to not spend that money to answer those questions now. So I, I, I want to be sensitive to staff's time and focus on that, so just, you know, like high-level quick hits, uh, you know, an in-depth paid park study, which is, we all know is quite an expensive venture. And we've felt like there are better places for our, our funds right now, but just a, a little bit more of generality on how, um, a, a small view of one of those segments would be, that report could, could help guide us in figuring out. Thanks.
Okay. Great, okay. So this slide, um, shows the breakdown of the projected levy. Um, so the general fund is, um, actually being reduced slightly from 25, and then the, um, debt service is increasing, um, due to the fire station debt payment. So there was one issuance that dropped off, and then we added the fire station, so the fire station's about 1.4 million. Um, so we, um, end up with that 9.96% levy. What does the 9.9% increase in the city's levy mean for your property tax bill? So at our June meeting, I showed you the top chart with the preliminary market values from the county. Those values didn't include the adjusted net tax capacity, which is calculated based on property classification, and it also didn't include the fiscal disparity numbers. So the bottom chart shows the updated numbers received from the county last week, and we did receive about $30,000 extra, um, increase in fiscal disparities and have an increased tax capacity. So both of those lower the tax rate. So as you can see, um, in that bottom chart, the tax rate is projected to be flat compared to 25. Um, and just a reminder from our June workshop that there was an overall market value increase to residential home values of 4.76%. So people will see that market value increase affect their overall tax bill, but the tax rate is only, um, moving about .07% at this, with these numbers. Any questions about this?
Questions?
Okay. Just a quick, so, if, if I have an assessment valuation of a million five, my taxes are only going up by $11?
That's correct.
Pardon?
Yes, that would be correct.
We're getting a, a new fire station and your taxes are only going to go up by $11? Good, it's a fair deal.
That really, yeah, that really shows what.
That's just one portion of it.
Mm-hmm. It really shows what that tax capacity does with that, that, that tax rate, so it just shows, you know, we don't really have control over that, that tax rate because it's really all driven by the tax capacity and what the county sets for evaluations.
But it, but the other thing, Greg, to your point about this, um, you know, we, we had to undertake a new fire station because of our growing community.
Absolutely.
Growth is paying for a lot of that, so, it's a good point. All right?
Okay.
Um, yeah. We don't know what the rest of the school districts in the county and all those folks.
We, we don't yet, no.
But that bottom chart looks a lot better than the top chart.
It does indeed.
It does, yeah, the, the tax rate, um, definitely makes a difference, but then, um, just again reminding you that, you know, people's values likely increase depending on their home, um, could have increased, which then they will see that valuation increase, which then their valuation is being at that rate, so, just to explain that. So here's what we're looking at from past to present levy changes, outlook for '27, um, right now would be about eight, I have 8.63%. Um, there's a couple of road projects that we'd be issuing debt for if those go, um, we're not 100% sure, and whether or not they happen to receive another funding source, so, um, that number could go up or down depending on those issuances. Um, and then '28 and '29, um, we're looking to stay pretty steady, um, right around that, between 3% to 4%. So as stated earlier, at our September 22nd meeting, we'll have to set our max tax levy, which needs to be certified by September 30th, and we cannot have a final levy higher than the preliminary levy, so, um, this is where we will, um, present to you at the next meeting, um, based on your feedback, and then, um, we'll continue to discuss and refine, um, the levy throughout the fall to see what we can, um, reduce it by if any. So that leaves us to a couple of slides of council discussion. Um, we had a question at the last workshop about what would the taxes be if we didn't have the new construction tax base? Um, so I, um, took, took a look at that, and the medium-value home taxes would go up an additional $60 a year, um, and the tax rate would increase. So, um, this does show that growth is paying for growth, um, it is reducing, um, the overall median home value, um, taxes with that growth. The next point, um, of discussion is the Southwest Corridor Transportation Coalition cost of $2,500 a year. Um, staff would like to ask council if they want to continue to be a member of that, um, coalition.
Okay. Are the, is there another question too, or is this?
I have more questions.
Okay.
This is the only question about the Transportation Coalition, so.
Okay, let's, let's talk this over a little bit then. So, um, the Southwest Corridor Transportation Coalition is a coalition that, um, Victoria has been a member of off and on, is that fair enough to say for?
That's fair.
Probably 20 years maybe? Um, and it started kind of with the, um, expansion of 212, and the coalition has members from Eden Prairie all the way to the border of Minnesota. And, um, you know, we have been supportive of this as a, as a corridor of commerce. Um, it does come through our community and it impacts our community greatly. As we have put together our program for construction, we're going to be through the city of Victoria. So I think the question here is how are we feeling about continuing to be a part of this coalition and supporting the expansion west of us at the cost of $2,500 a year? And these folks make a trip to Washington, DC on an annual basis. They, they do meet on a monthly basis, um, so it does cover some administrative costs and some travel costs.
Do we think there's any benefit, right? We, so we do still have need funding for the downtown portion of Highway 5? Will that be a help for us with that?
Yeah, Ms. Hardy, please.
Thank you.
I love your opinion about this.
Yeah, th- thank you, Mayor members of the council, Councilmember Roberts, that's a great question, and so they have a long history, this organization has a long history of doing some lobbying work in Washington, DC, um, and at the state level on behalf of its membership. Um, and, um, they have been active in the Highway 5, and so I think any opportunity that we have to get in front of our legislative delegation on the federal and the state side, I think is, um, has been beneficial. I think that we're seeing that. I think that we're seeing that in, just with the Highway 5 project, with all, all the funding that we have gotten with the different approaches that we have taken. And the county has certainly played a big role in that on our behalf. SWCTC has also been active in those conversations and those lobbying efforts. And so I think there's some value in continuing to do that. But the question would be, do we think, you know, is there value in doing it through this membership? Or do we feel like we're better off taking those funds and doing that on our own? I think that is one of the, the questions that is out there. I think if you were to choose not to do this and do lobbying through SWCTC, I would encourage you to consider keeping the funds in there rather than reducing your budget so you can continue to do those efforts on your own. And that said, they do, they are well-connected and they do, do a lot of that scheduling and because of their connections, we're able to get meetings perhaps easier than we could on our own because they have that name recognition and continue to do that. The other piece to look at is into the future. As they focus out west, it's a matter of just, do we find, we, City of Victoria, do you council members find that, does this investment as continued investment and lobbying for that going west of here benefit our community broader, the region? And so that would be another, another way to look at it, that is, does the regional draw and do regional improvements actually make things better for our community? And for the $2,500 a year that you're investing?
Do you think, you know, let's say we didn't continue to do this, right? And we have the 2,500, so you're saying, right, we could do it ourselves? But do, one, does staff have capacity to do that, right, for 2, or if we find someone else to do it on our behalf? It doesn't feel like that 2,500 would probably go as long of a way, as, long of a ways as it probably does here. And I guess I'm just, with what we have still to do here, it probably makes sense right now and maybe in another year or two, it doesn't. I mean, I feel like a couple of years ago, we didn't because the focus was really 212, right? Like 212 and it didn't make sense for us at that time to be part of it. But with all the road construction we have going on, I feel like it's a pretty small amount.
I agree. I agree. I think this is, well, I think it's worthwhile to spend it. It does have a regional impact. They have had it for a long time. They're well-connected. I, I feel like this is, is something we can pay forward.
Yeah, I think, to your point too, Chad, the $2,500, we could use it directly, but would it get us as far as this? And this is an annual decision, right? It's an annual membership, you can.
It's not like a five-year commitment or?
Yeah. So you're.
Well, I, I think that, like, for all the reasons that we said about Highway 5, that's, those are all good reasons. I think we need to think forward about where the next fight is going to come. And if, if I had to place a marker on where that's going to be, it's going to be County Road 10 and the expansion through there is, you know, there's going to be, the railroad is going to have a pretty strong lobbying effort to want to keep doing what they're doing. There's high tension lines that are going to want to keep doing, they're doing. There's the interconnectivity between County Road 43, which is in our south growth development area. I mean, that's the next place that Victoria is going to grow. So if we feel like this being part of this, you know, can put resources and manpower on, on that next area that we're going to face challenges, it's probably like we've all, I think, consensus well-spent on going with that effort.
Okay. If you have consensus on that, thank you.
Perfect. My last slide of questions. Does council agree with the proposed changes to the revenues, fees and charges? Other than maybe the couple of questions that we're going to circle back on with you, the skates and whatnot?
I'm feeling, I'm feeling comfortable with where we landed on those.
Yeah. I do, I do as well.
I feel like we have, we're all like-minded on it.
Mayor, Members of the Council, I'll just add, thank you. I'll just add that you won't actually adopt your fee schedule until December. And so there's plenty of time to revisit this if you learn more information or if you want to revisit anything. So we certainly have ample opportunity to do that between now and when you would adopt this in December. And that adoption is done by ordinance, so there'll also be a public hearing. So there, you may be subject to hearing from public comment on these things too. That might help inform your decision when that time comes.
Okay.
So maybe the question is, do you have enough information to know what areas we want to dive in further on?
Yes.
For this discussion?
Yes. Oh, yeah, that, that was good feedback that you gave earlier and it does help to know as we are budgeting for some of these increased fees. So if there was something that didn't feel right to you or you had questions or more concerns about, then it could ultimately affect the budget, which is why we ask at this point.
Well, and just as an example, and I think I brought it up earlier, on the Lions Pavilion, I love the creativity. I, I love the option and we can see if it's a workable solution and if it's not, go to where we were before or another option.
Think it again.
Great creativity. That's.
Agreed.
Great.
Okay.
And then, does council wish to proceed with the max tax levy of 9.96%?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
I'm, I'm good with that.
I am as well.
Consensus on that?
Okay. And then finally, what additional information would be helpful to the council's policy decision-making before the final max tax levy is approved on September 22nd? If there's something you want me to bring back to you with that preliminary levy vote before you vote, is there anything?
I, from my standpoint, I think we've given staff enough direction on the things that we have interest in and get a viewpoint on it.
I agree.
Don't feel like we can add anything at this point. We're at a.
I know in a previous meeting, we talked, right? So the, there has been a large increase in the cost with the yard waste dump. And I guess, I'm curious now that, that it's been a few months, I guess, right? That we've changed the access to there. Have we seen a big reduction in, I guess I'll say, legal dumping that is hopefully bringing our costs down? Yeah, I guess that's.
Yeah. Great question, Councilmember Roberts. Um, yes, it has, it has solved a lot of the problems for, with that illegal dumping from contractors. We're not seeing those trailer fulls coming in and out throughout the week like we were previously. In addition, we do have that very visible security camera out there, so that may have helped deterred some people from dumping illegally. While we continue to have some problems here, there, it's, it's, it's definitely been reduced to, in comparison to where we were at, so.
It's good to hear.
And then did we, I know we've had a, I guess, a couple of storms or we've had some high winds, you know, I don't think it's probably at the level of last year, but has, has that been a significant, like, has that been an increase from last year at all with the, you know, Public Works having to pick up all the branches and down trees?
Yeah.
Stuff? I, I think last year was a really bad year, if I remember right. So we probably haven't hit that, but I know we've had a few.
Yeah, I, I can look at where we are at our year-to-date. I know I walked by there last week and they had just emptied it like the week before and it wasn't like piled up like I've seen it in some, something, in just over a weekend. So they did open it a couple of days, like right after those storms during the week to allow people to come in and, and more conveniently get rid of some of their compost. But overall, it's, Public Works hasn't reported of any like excessive dumping or.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good to hear.
Appreciate it. Okay. I'm not seeing anything else from council on this item. Do you have anything else that you need from us, Trish?
I do not. Thank you very much for your input. I appreciate it.
All right. Very good.
Thank you.
All right. We're moving on to our next item. We'll let the planning staff get in place here. Item 2.2 is to discuss a proposed new residential zoning district, which would be called the R1A Old Town District. And presenting on that this evening is our associate planner, Travis Briarly. Good evening, Travis. Welcome.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Give me one second to get this pulled up.
Yeah, go ahead, whenever you're ready.
And these are the wrong things. There we go. So tonight, we're going to be talking about just a overview of a proposed R1A zoning district, which is similar to our R1, just in a smaller area. Just background with this, this is a, all started with a zoning amendment request that was made for a change to dimensional standards for R1, which the city council voted to not adopt. And this is an alternate solution that has been asked to move forward for review. The process that we're looking at is going to the Planning Commission, which we got into the Planning Commission on July 15th, as well as last week, bringing to the city council tonight for a discussion on it. We will need a public hearing before any of this passes. And then council consideration we're looking at sometime in September or early October to bring it back if everything keeps moving forward. The goals of the R1A district is to focus on redevelopment and not subdivision development. So this single property development instead of large parcels, 40, 50 homes and, and up from there. The main focus of the R1A is to make the principal structure of the home be in the focus of the property. So keeping that single-family look, that traditional, as well as creating reasonable design standards to match with the neighborhood that is available or that is in the R1 area. Going into that, our R1 area is, is basically this map, it's south of 5 and going down north of St. Victoria. If you look, you'll see that the neighborhoods are subdivisions going all the way back to 1914 in the areas. We're mainly looking at the areas that are in red, plus a little bit down in the south with the, with the Dean Helms addition back in 1995. Couple of things that we're looking at for the affected parcels is everything that's in the, in the gold, it would be the new R1A. There is a property of Quamoclet that is, right now, zoned as R1. We'd be looking at rezoning that to Central Business District, an apartment building, so it better fits within that district, so it can become a standard formatting. To the south, along Petunia, there's a property that's currently R1, just north of the R3. Moving that to an R2 would make that duplex property conforming. We do have kind of the overall effect of the rules for this area. The, the majority of the properties on the left are underneath the shoreline zoning. You can see that by the shaded area with the blue dots on it. So there, you still have to follow shoreline regulations and all those rules. And then we have everything that's not in there that has a better potential. And then you'll notice that there's different colors on different parcels. When we start looking at the dimensional standards for the minimum lot dimensions, the parcels that are in green that are on the right side could be split into two parcels. The one that's in, in dark blue in the dead center, that could be split into two parcels, but it's still slightly affected by the shoreline regulations, primarily the impervious surface coverage that's available. And then the two parcels you see that are highlighted in red, they're large enough to be split into two parcels. However, shoreline regulations would not allow for that to happen as the minimum lot size is much greater than our current R1 standard. And then we have the, the two parcels that are in the off-blue colors, those just kind of highlight parcels that need to be rezoned. With that, they wouldn't be able to be split and they wouldn't be affected by anything that we did with the Old Town residential zoning. So I'm just kind of getting into everything. The intent, like I said, is for infill redevelopment opportunities. We want to maintain similar construction in the existing homes, i.e. we don't want a 4,300 square foot home sitting next to a 950 square foot Rambler. It's just, it's out of place, it's out of character, we want to avoid that. We want to allow for the smaller lot sizes, as well with that for smaller front rear setbacks. We also want to allow for more varied, various housing stock within our comprehensive plan. Our R1 would allow for twin homes and duplexes, however, R1 does not. So the R1A would allow for twin homes and duplexes to be placed there. It's a way that we can improve, or improve the, the use of the property by building something on there that generates a greater value of the property, which ultimately helps the city in the long run. When looking at the comprehensive plans, we have the 2040 comprehensive plan, there's no changes we need to do that, with that. And then with the 2050, we would add in the R1A as a zoning district and then our future land uses wouldn't be affected either by that. A little bit of word tweaking we need to do, but through the Planning Commission, city council, the next several years, we'll take care of that small change. We also looked at the shoreline ordinance, reached out to DNR. The DNR will not adopt any variances to their requirements for the city for the purposes of this zoning, so they also apply. When we are looking at, the biggest thing that we're probably looking at is going to be the dimensional standards. On the screen in front of you, we have the R1, so our general single-family low-density. So that's our current standard of a 12,000 square foot lot, 80 feet wide, 130 feet deep, as well as the setbacks in there. With the R1A, for a single-family home, we'd be looking at 9,100 square feet. And then shrinking the lot dimensional standards, 75 feet if it's a corner parcel and 65 feet if it's an interior parcel. Also taking the lot depth and dropping it from 130 to 110 feet and then reducing the front and rear, rear setbacks by five feet while still maintaining the 10-foot setback on the property. And then with a twin home, same idea, but making a smaller parcel. And then duplexes would actually be a larger parcel, 14,500. Those square footages are based on the densities that our comp plan has between the two and a half and the six units an acre. So when we look at twin homes, those are single-family homes on two parcels with an adjoining wall. A duplex is a single building on a single parcel and that's why it's twice the size. And that's just to meet those density requirements.
Say, repeat that again. The twin home is two single-family homes adjoined by a wall?
Correct. So they'd be next to each other, but each part of the twin home is its own parcel.
Okay.
And then.
The duplex is?
One building on one parcel. Generally on a, with a duplex building, you'll stack the units, but the units could be side by side as well. But it'd just be one parcel for that.
But a two-family home?
Two-family home, correct.
Got it. Thank you.
One thing that was brought up during the Planning Commission was the idea of taking the 35% impervious surface and allowing that to be created at a higher number, such as 40, 50%. Staff did take a look into that. What that would allow to do is to actually build a larger footprint for a home or allow for greater accessory structures to be on the property. So that would be something that's considered. Staff's opinion on that is that it could create homes out of place, but we didn't look at an alternate solution, which I'll present later, on how we can control that if that's something the council would be interested in looking at.
Can we just pause on that though for a minute? The, with the idea of 40, say 40% is impervious surface? We're going to keep side yard setbacks essentially the same. So if somebody wants to tear something down and put a larger square foot home on that property, the, I think the, what we're trying to avoid is this, like where we see in some other older communities where somebody drops in like a, almost a four-story house, single family, and then pushes the building out to the edges of the lot line. And then that looks like something's just like a, like an overgrown youth in a.
Out of place.
So I, I kind of don't feel like with a 10-foot side yard setback, we're necessarily going to get that feel. So if we don't increase the impervious surfaces in these spaces, and then we would essentially create a toothless thought. It's like, okay, so you created this new zoning district, but I'm still locked, so to speak, by not really being able to bring, you know, the amenities of a newer home into renovating the area, which is, I think, what we want. We want reinvestment in these older neighborhoods. We don't want to create something that just locks people into having a deteriorating home. So I, I feel like, okay, I'm okay with this deepening of the setbacks, but if the effect of that is it can't be done because of impervious surface, then maybe we're doing a disservice with this. So I, I think I hear where, where the Planning Commission was going. So I, I think I hear where, where the planning commission was going. I think we should give serious consideration to upping that impervious surface as long as with that, we are not going to create increased runoff from stormwater affecting the existing neighbors, because then that would be clearly something that's detrimental. So, you know, if, if we can craft things that way, I, I think that from where I'm seeing what we want to do with the intention of this and spur redevelopment in these existing parcels that we have, might not be a bad idea. Because as time goes on, if we can't get something that works, we're just going to have in this part that we're trying to do this, an increasingly deteriorating property value in that part of town.
Yeah, understood.
And mayor and council, to the stormwater point, that was one of the factors that staff had looked at. One, we're considering stormwater, there are state regulations that don't allow for any changes to a property to increase the concentration rate of flow of stormwater when it leaves the property. When we do look at increasing impervious cover, you might need individual lot stormwater controls. The city council, to my understanding, is very aware of regional stormwater ponding. When we're looking at infill development, we'd be looking at something at rain gardens or some type of storage area for the water to be on site so that it can leave the property in a more appropriate rate and concentration. The downside to those type of structures is that they're not necessarily maintained. And after ten, fifteen, twenty years, that rain garden is now flat ground and didn't change anything because it hasn't been maintained. There could be multiple owners over that time period. As things consider, that's, it's something that's extremely difficult for the city to enforce as far as those maintenances, especially for individual lots. But it can be done and there can be other controls put in place. As far as the, the size of the home and those dimensions, towards the end of the presentation, there's some proposed rules that we looked at that would stop that from happening. Before I move on, are there any other questions with the dimensional standards, the bulk standards?
See, none?
I mean, I still, there's, there's, we're proposing to convert, for lack of better expression, a parcel that's in the R one right now that has a multi-dwelling building on it and then changing that to Central Business District. Are, are we, do we, do we have the potential to create unintended consequences with that by, you know, with now turning that into a commercial parcel? And then somebody, not, maybe not the present owner, but maybe the next owner says, you know, I'm going to knock this apartment building down because I think I can put in something fast food here. And then now we have something that is incongruent with the existing neighborhood. Whereas if we allowed the existing residential structure to maintain and keep it in this zoning district, that maybe some of the other uses is that if it does get past its useful life, it's torn down and we're creating, let's say, single-family residences or other more, properties that are more congruent with the neighborhood that it sits in.
Yeah. Mr. Briarly, you got to comment on that?
Absolutely. Mayor and council, in response to that, there's pros and cons to doing the rezoning. Doing the, currently the property that's on Quamoclet sits as a non-conforming property. And what that means is it means that it would be difficult for the property owner to make any improvements. I've spoken to the, the current property owner, as the prior property owner actually passed away earlier this spring. So there's some questions on the future of the site and potential improvements and things like that. So if it stays R one, it makes that a little bit more difficult. However, if you go to CBD, it, that becomes a legal conforming property. And then at that point, they can make the expansions. But to council member Vansky's point, that does open it up to where that property then would be able to be redeveloped into something similar to what we have in the rest of our downtown area, because it would be underneath the same zoning district. And that might not be appropriate for that parcel due to its proximity to single family homes and not having Highway five being a buffer zone between the two districts. So it's something that, there's pros and cons to each way that it could go, is the short-term value that we would gain out of it and the property owner would gain out of it, we're at the long-term risk of causing potential issues in the future.
Yeah. Something to consider for sure. And if, if something like that were to come forward with the council at that point in time, is it, would it be okay for us to deny that based on the fact that it doesn't, it isn't congruent with the surroundings?
Well, mayor and council, one of the things is that we have certain design standards and review processes within our CBD district. And that goes through, planning commission comes to the city council. Basically, you can't build anything in the CBD without first coming to the planning commission, city council for approval. So through that process, that could be used as a tool to help at least shape what that property could be redeveloped in in the future. But that's mainly what you have, what the city has in place to stop something, the stop of four-story, sixty-unit apartment building that may not fit there and it would just look out of place and everything else. Or if we expanded the uses to restaurants that have drive-through services, would that be appropriate there? And that's the thing, is that it all depends on, unfortunately, who's, who's all sitting at the dais at the time of that redevelopment and what the, the community feels about that type of stuff. But it's unlikely that that building would be torn down anytime soon, but it's always a potential. We can't really control what a private property owner does when it comes to the concerns of their property.
So I have, so if we keep it the way it is, right, so they have less options of what they can do, right? But if they had an idea, right, they could bring it to us? And then at that time, we could change, right? Could we not change?
We could change the zoning of that parcel.
At that parcel at that time to, if, if it, if, if that idea met what we thought fit the neighborhood better than just opening it up?
Correct. Mayor and council, one of the, one of the wonderful things that the city is allowed to do that has, was we can choose our own zoning or land use. And it's something that, there is a little bit of oversight on it when it comes to the zoning, because that parcel's adjacent to current CBD, we can change it to the Central Business District at any time. And this is one of those things that we don't need the consent of property owners to do. I know that sounds strange and weird, but that's one of the, the ultimate authorities the city council does have, is they can make that decision.
Well, an alternate use could also, you know, i- if there's compelling reuse, it could come as a conditional use permit. Could it not?
Is, is council members, far as the proposed use on the site?
Wait, so let's say we dispense with the idea of turning it into CBD. It stays in the R one, but because of that proximity, could that owner bring a conditional, apply for a conditional use permit to sort of change or, or bring an application to?
Council member, not necessarily. What they would want to do is apply for a zoning text amendment. So that would affect all the R one or all the R one A to allow for that type to go in. At that point, we could put a conditional use permit on it, but it'd be, it'd be my, my opinion that leaves down a slippery slope, because we would be affecting the whole thing. And that's why we're looking at R one A today, instead of looking at making a zoning text amendment change to the entire R one.
That makes sense. Okay. Any other thoughts, questions? Okay. All right.
As, as we go through this, a lot of the stuff that we're going to look at for our principal accessory uses is already allowed in our R one. The main difference is twins, homes and duplexes get added to the R one A. There's a lot of words on this page, so I thought I'd simplify, but basically what all this breaks down to is limiting how accessory structures are, are placed and built on residential properties. Since it's a lot of words, we'll just break it down into the simple changes. For the R one A, it's being proposed that all accessory structures, whether attached or detached, can't have a footprint greater than the footprint of the principal structure. So if you have a footprint of your home where the foundation's a thousand square feet, your attached garage plus any shed or any detached garage or anything like that can't be greater than a thousand square feet. Currently, what we have is we say that attached accessory structures, we don't have a limit. As long as it's attached, you can build as big as you want, meet the impervious and you're fine. Detached is nine hundred square feet is permitted and then up to thirteen hundred and fifty square feet is permitted with a conditional use permit. So this sets a standard where if someone is to redevelop a property, they have to look at how big they want the home first, how much garage space that they want on the property and find a balance to that, which goes back to limiting how big a home's going to be, as well as limiting how big a garage is going to be, trying to keep that focused towards the single-family home or duplex or twin home, what have you. Accessory structures heights, wouldn't it be greater than the principal structure? Under our current code, the height's thirty-five feet. The home could be a single-family rambler and you could have a thirty-five foot detached or attached garage, and that's well within our code. This would limit it, yet going back to, the house should be the principal thing that you see when you look at a property. Getting rid of metal-covered storage buildings or pole barns. Right now, we don't have a restriction against that, but that would get rid of the opportunity for someone to put in a metal shed, which when you have smaller lots and everybody closer together, you have to think about the noise that's caused by rain, wind, storm and other debris that could be bouncing off that. And that could be disturbing to neighbors or it could be disruptive and we'd want to avoid that type of stuff. You must have a principal structure. So if you're going to split a property, that could be split and it's going to leave just a garage on one or a shed, and that wouldn't be allowed, you'd have to take down the shed until the principal structure's attached, unless that shed is part of a building permit that would come into play to actually build it. So the main reason behind that is you just don't want to have a garage or a shed left on a parcel that could hinder its ability to redevelop. Because the whole point is to redevelop to something new and increase the property values and the look of the, and feel of that neighborhood. The other thing that we looked at was inter-module containers, the shipping containers, Conexes. We have a lot of people who are moving into Victoria, we get a lot of calls from pods and other shipping companies that want to drop off a Conex or shipping container. And we've had requests to have it there for a weekend and we've had a request to have it there for two weeks, things like that. What this would do is it sets a limit, say in forty-eight hours. Now, it doesn't necessarily seem like a lot because that's not an entire weekend. What happens is this falls underneath the zoning code. So it'd be a zoning code enforcement action that'd be handled by staff instead of law enforcement. So upon a complaint of one of these containers sitting in someone's yard, we go through our normal code enforcement process. But it still allows that flexibility, still allows some discretion at the staff level to, to resolve the issue of that being there in violation of the code. Right now, we don't have any restrictions, basically, as long as it's not put in, put in the street, you can throw it on your property.
What's magic about forty-eight hours?
Forty-eight hours is a determination between, when we look at vehicle standards, between the, between how long a vehicle is parked compared to when it becomes stored. So forty-eight hours, seventy-two hours are the two numbers that are generally used to define that. So we try to stick with either twenty-four, forty-eight or seventy-two hours when looking at a standard. The forty-eight hours, it's just an arbitrary number that was thrown in. There's really, if it needs to be longer, shorter or completely removed, it's, it doesn't have a whole lot of effect, it just depends on how the city council would want to see that type of language enforced.
Yeah. I, I favor going to seventy-two. I don't think we need it longer than that, but I think seventy-two is fair.
I, I concur.
Yep.
Trying to move out. Takes a long time.
Yep. One quick just clarification. So detached or attached, if you've got a thousand square feet, it just has to be a thousand or less. Doesn't matter if it's detached or attached for the garage. Is that accurate?
Council member, I think I understand what you're saying. So if the home itself has a foundation, so let's say it's a, the foundation for the home is a thousand square feet.
Yep.
It has a three-car attached garage, which is going to be six hundred and fifty square feet. At that point, now there's the remaining three hundred and fifty square feet worth of foundation for your second accessory building to be placed on the property. The current code only allows for one of two, so up to two, excuse me, between a detached, attached, shed and other accessory structures. So we're not changing the limit of two, we're just redefining how we're determining how big of the accessory structure can be in comparison to the home. And we want to make sure that the home is the, the main reason.
The principal structure.
Yeah, that, that's what you're looking at, you're not looking at the garage first and then, oh, there's a home attached to it.
Got it.
Something like that.
Got it. Thank you.
We did look at some conditional uses as well, and these come from some of our R one standards. One is accessory dwelling units. And we do have in the proposed language, part of the entire zoning review, there's similar language of this already placed in there. But we want to make sure that attached or accessory dwelling units are counted part of the principal structure, meaning that it's part of the footprint, it's got to meet the setbacks, that type of stuff is detached, meaning detached setbacks. It does count as an accessory unit, so you wouldn't be able to have, say, a detached ADU and then have an attached garage to the principal home and then another garage that works for the ADU, because then at that point it'd be three, that'd be too many. The point of a single-family home or even a duplex or a twin home is that there's just the one principal structure, we don't want accessory structure being used as a principal structure. We also looked at off-street parking requirements. And one of the things that we're proposing there is that you have to increase by one space to accommodate that ADU, whether it's attached or detached. The biggest thing that we want to avoid is getting into a situation where there's not enough off-street parking. And when winter rolls around and we have a storm, we can get put in a position where public works and law enforcement have to start making decisions on towing vehicles or the quality of plowing and just staff time and resources. Probably the biggest thing in there. The other thing that we looked at is daycare facilities, which there's a lot of, the state regulates daycare facilities. So we don't want to get into those regulations on our own. But what we can look at is we can look at parking and we can look at play equipment. And we can say, you know, play equipment has to be in the rear yard of the property and not in an easement. That's something that makes sense, it's in the backyard, so that when you're driving by, you're still looking at a house, not necessarily, it's not a new horizon, it's, it's your, it's your family daycare in there for parking, making sure that if you have employees that are bringing out of the daycare, that there's parking off-street for them. And making it that way, we don't have disruptions of the flow of traffic and we don't have more parking generated on residential streets, taking away from the other neighbors in the neighborhood. One thing that is being proposed, and that we looked at with the planning commission last week, was present, potential design standards. In here, the main things that we're looking at is the relationship to adjacent buildings or maintaining a similar design standard. So when you do build a home, it has to fit within the neighborhood. If it doesn't fit within the neighborhood, what would happen is that that would be reviewed by staff and if we felt that it didn't, we'd work with the applicant to, to have it there or they would be able to go through an appeal process through the planning commission and the city council to get a final judgment on, does it meet that standard? The other thing we looked at is making sure the primary entrance is towards the street. A lot of older homes built, you'd have the driveway on the side of the home going to a detached garage if there was a detached and you have the entrance to the home on the side of the house, not on the street side. This would say that any redevelopment has to go with a more modern standard where the entrance is facing the street. In addition to that, minimum use of windows on the front wall facing the street at fifteen percent. Fifteen percent is easily done. We haven't had any applications that have been below that. But what that does is it would, is it would potentially stop a redeveloped property from having a home placed on the site and it's a front door and a bedroom window and that's all that's on the front. We still want to try to encourage that more modern look to fit in with the development of houses over the decades to come. A private front yard requirement, this seems a little weird, but basically what this says is that you can't garden gnome all the way to the right of way. You have to have space between the street and your house that is an actual yard. So that will stop the, basically putting in those front yard gardens. We do have a couple in town, some look really nice, some don't, it's all a matter of opinion. But this would just be a way to stop that type of activity from taking place. And when we look at similar building materials for accessory structures, if you're going to put in an accessory structure, whether it be attached or detached, you would be required to make it match in a similar design to the, the principal structure. Currently in our residential zoning, if the, you only have to do that when the building gets to two hundred, or your accessory structure's two hundred square feet or greater, then we require that, which is common throughout any code that I've looked at. But this takes it a step further and says, if you're going to do an accessory structure, you got to make it match, because we're trying to find something to modernize without taking away from the historic feel as well. The other part to this is the tree preservation. When you are redeveloping a property, it's encouraged not to take down trees that provide shade for the adjacent property. not to take down trees that provide shade for the adjacent properties, or if you have, we have older trees, we have trees that are over 100 years old on some of these properties. We shouldn't be cutting them down to take down a house, is basically what this regulation says. So, with that, that's, that's the giant overview of the R1A zoning and some of the changes. Few of the questions that, that staff had is one, do the proposed accessory structure regulations make sense for the R1A, based on other applications that we've had and things that we've heard from the community? Are the restrictions to what can and can't be built within the R1A reasonable? So, that kind of goes to your design standards and layout of it, which is something that we don't have in any of our other zonings except for the CBD. And then, should we allow for the increase of impervious surface, knowing what we discussed earlier? And with that, I stand for any questions.
Thank you so much. You did good work on this. I think, aside from the couple of things that we brought up during the presentation, I think you did a great job on this. I feel like it, it sets us up really well for redevelopment in our more, our older parts of town, and I think the accessory structure regulations make sense to me. Restrictions are reasonable, and impervious surface, I think as long as we can figure out where we, we go with that extra runoff, I'm, I'm okay with increasing the permitted amount on a case-by-case basis. Council, any other comments?
I think I'm struggling just a little bit with the concept of the private front yard. If, I mean, there are a fair number of homes in Victoria where people have chosen to have their front yard be a garden, and I, I get that in some cases. It's not terribly making, but in the vast majority, they are, and I'm a little bit reticent about that much of a restriction. I could see maybe cutting that to something about 50% of the yard, so that there, there is some yard, but if, I, I think that, not, not that I'm, you know, a heavy proponent of, you know, protecting the pollinators, but, you know, that is part of some of the appeal, like people want to, to go that route, and, and especially in some of the older communities, there, there seems to be a, a bit more of a preponderance of that. I don't know if I want to reach to that depth of restricting that, or, you know, cut it down to give it, you know, that it's not impermissible, but maybe snug up, you know, how, how much that we'd be willing to tolerate. Because right now, we're saying that we're not tolerating.
Yeah.
So, is there a happy medium for that front yard that we could allow?
Have you seen, Travis, have you seen some alternate language that might accommodate Councilmember Evansky's concerns?
So, Mayor and Council, one thing with this is there's, there's a lot of different ordinances that have been, been looked at, or especially over the past year. And one of the things that we looked at, and we actually reached out to the city of Edina, because they have a really big green thumb and a really large green initiative, and we were actually talking to them about pollinators and about different regulations they have, and what they see, and issues, and good things and whatnot. And a pollinator is a maintained area. If you're getting rid of noxious weeds, you're having professionals come and taking care of that type of stuff, it's maintained. It's not just growing grass to grow grass so the butterflies come around. So, with that, we've worked with them, and that's something that we're going to be bringing forward and within the nuisance code, to see if there's anything, but that's still a ways away. So, there is that mixed into it. As far as this going in here, that's the main thing to stop, is that. But if we did allow for pollinator gardens, or regular gardens, or for what have you to be in the front yard, the other thing that would regulate it is our regulations on sightline distances, especially at intersections, and making sure that those items do not create a hazard for pedestrian or vehicle traffic. So, we have other means if we want to allow this to happen. The only thing that this has is an aesthetic appearance, and that's all subjective to, to anybody who reads it.
And, and if the homeowner should choose to do something like that, so. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Staff, you have everything you need for?
Mayor, Council, I'd like clarification on the, on, to Councilmember Evansky's point. Is that something that the council would like to see struck from these, from these regulations, because this will also have an effect on?
I mean, I'm leaning towards having that yard restriction struck from this. I think that, you know, if we, it's, I, you know, if they wants to have, you know, their, especially if they're, we're bringing front yard setbacks down to 25 feet, you know, that you're not going to get these imposing.
And considering we have other means of enforcement, if it's out of hand. I guess I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I am, I'm as well.
It's fine.
Yeah. Okay. Looks like you got consensus on that, then?
So, the next steps going forward, Mayor and Council with this, is to let the city attorney take a review of all the final language, what the ordinance would be, and then we would go ahead and schedule a public hearing with the planning commission to get feedback, and take any guidance from the city manager of anything in between if something should change. All right?
I feel like we're a little bit light on guidance for Travis on the impervious surface question. I mean, I, I kind of feel like if we're going to look to sort of promote the use of these deeper setback, the shorter setbacks, which would allow larger dwellings to be built, that I wouldn't want that to be restrained, so to speak, by, you know, the, essentially, the same impervious surface requirement that we have. I feel like we can probably relax that a little bit in these instances. So, you know, maybe 50% is probably a little bit on the extreme side, but 40 feels like a decent balance. Again, subject to, you know, like, you can't create a stormwater problem for
Right.
your neighbors. So, you know, it's, it's a review of adequate drainage. Maybe there needs to be, certainly in some of the denser areas of, you know, I'll just throw out my, I'm living in the city of Chicago, but maybe you, you had large impervious surfaces. By the time you add, you know, sort of two garages in the, in the dwelling, and you would need a catch basin to catch all your rainwater before it would flow into the storm source. So, those kind of things, I think, I want to explore about, you know, what do we do to make sure that we're not creating a burden for our existing neighbors?
Right. And that'll be engineered. Mr. Brierley?
Uh, Mayor and Council, that point, something that, that I'll be doing is talking to the city engineer, as well as looking at various recent subdivisions which were approved, and kind of how those homes were set up, is what, because those with the PUDs had smaller setbacks than what we're looking at, as well as higher impervious numbers for a lot of the properties. Granted, those use a different thing. And we'll also take a look at the properties that we do have in the, in the proposed R1A district, to see how that could be affected as far as development. Provide some examples, and if, if the council would like, I'd be more than happy to come back to a future workshop, just to discuss this point with more detail and better examples prior to moving forward to any public hearing.
That sounds fine. If, you know, if, if the data can support it, then let's look at the data. I just don't want to agree with something that just, we did something, and it was moot because of this point.
Yeah. I think that's a great idea. All right. Anything else? All right. There are no further items on our workshop agenda this evening, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We stand adjourned. We will be back in less than five minutes with our city council meeting.